2022, 2023 operating and capital budget. The first thing is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And then Karen Seganga, would you like to take the roll call?
Um, roll call? Sure, roll call.
Oh, do you want to do roll call?
No, I'm happy to.
Oh, I have a hit.
Is that what you were asking me to do?
Yeah, do you want to do roll call?
Yes, that would be lovely. Karen Nolte?
Here.
Michelle Stamwalos?
Here.
Mara Smets?
Here.
Laura Sanders?
Here.
Karen Seganga here, and Diane Bradkovich?
Present.
And then Jeff McDowell is absent.
And Jeff did call in, and he was not able to get back in time from Ohio. So, if he had planned, so we need to vote on if that will be an excused absence or not. So, if someone would like to make a motion for that to be an excused absence.
Can I just ask what that means exactly? What is a not excused absence?
If they didn't call, or they didn't have a reason, they just blew us off.
Okay, what I call a no-show.
Yeah, no-show, yeah.
And I think it matters because if there's a certain number of unexcused absences, then we have the option to remove the person from the rolls.
Right, exactly.
I actually need to start the procedure to have that.
Start the procedure, okay.
I'll make a motion to excuse Jeff's absence.
I'll second that motion, since we don't, you want a not excuse.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. So, this is the first call for public comment on the 2022, 2023 budget for Dexter Township.
May we do conflict of interest?
Oh, no, we didn't do conflict of interest, thank you, sorry, I'm sorry. Is there anyone on the board tonight that would have a conflict of interest with any items that are in the budget or in our board package? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the first call for public comment. Please state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Karen, you're going to be the...
Harley, make sure they can push the button and green light is on.
There comes David.
There's not one.
He's on time.
Yeah, thank you, Harley Ryder, 4221 Ryder Court. I want to start this by saying that I know there are some people who think that I'm bitter because I lost the election. That's not true at all. Deb ran a fair election, I accept the results. And sometimes the person who comes in second is really the winner. I'm happily enjoying retirement.
Congratulations. I'm sure you are.
Having said that, I am a little concerned after I looked at the budget packets tonight, concerned with a couple of directions, or a couple of things about the direction the board is taking. From the FAQs, the integration, or intergenerational equity, tax dollars today are to be spent on services for the taxpayer who paid those dollars, not save for future benefit. And also, anything in excess of the minimum requirements available to spend, et cetera, are for existing taxpayers. I'm a little concerned about that because the responsible fiscal government, to me, is being able to save for the future, for unexpected events, to being able to save for things that may come up. And a good example is 10 years ago, when we had the tornado here, Dexter Township only had $200,000 to help with the emergency services on that. We had it in the bank. I'm a little concerned if the board is not in favor of saving things. I'm also a little concerned about the budgets. I know the general fund budget is expected to be, what, 440, almost a half a million dollars, deficit budget. The open space land initiative budget is going to be $22,150 in the red, and there's no reserve to make that up, so it's clearly a violation of Michigan state law, specifically MCL 141, 435. And also, the American Rescue Plan Act is going to be $185,000 in the negative. There is a balance theoretically to make that up, but I'm also concerned about the, what's going to happen with that American grant, and that, there's only four specific categories that that grant can be used for. And $300,000 going to pay wealthy landowners to not do what they weren't going to do in the first place is not one of the provisions of that grant. So, I'm concerned that when it's all done, that the, when the feds bought it, and they will, that the township's going to have to pay that $300,000 back out of the general fund. And looking at the long-term capital plan, if the board follows through on that, Dexter Township's going to be broke in six years. And I'm a little concerned about that.
That's a 30-second warning. You've got 30 seconds to go.
I'm sorry?
It's a 30-second warning, so you have 30 seconds to go on your three minutes.
Well, that just ate up 15 of my 30 seconds right there.
I'll give you the 15 seconds of credit.
All right, and finally, I'm concerned, since this is the 10th anniversary of the Dexter tornado, I don't see anything at all in the budget. Of course, the budget's not very transparent, because I don't see any line item explanations in there, but I don't see anything to maintain the township warning system that we spent $385,000 on, and I'm a little concerned about that lack of maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else would like to speak on the, I don't know how to make it stop, on the budget? No, you.
Is it still on?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're on.
Thank you. I think it's on. Jason Machieski, 8983 Starfield Court. I'm before you tonight to speak on behalf of a road project. My wife Molly and I drove here tonight up Wiley Road, which is right outside of our subdivision, and there is a stark difference between Wiley Road north of Island Lake Road and south of Island Lake Road. Last year, you may know, you may remember, that north of Island Lake Road was repaired, and it is in far better shape than the part that wasn't repaired south of Island Lake Road. As a matter of fact, if you go south of Island Lake Road down Wiley, I'm pretty sure that you could skateboard and get a good jump off a lift, the lift that goes into East Stony Field Drive into our neighborhood. With the endless reappearing craters, not even top walls at this point, and deteriorating road condition, that road is in utter disrepair. It is one of the most traveled dirt roads in this township. It sees traffic that it did not see 10 years ago before it burned. Countless delivery trucks, large trucks carrying people to burn. And it was just, as always, avoiding the tunnel there underneath the railroad on Island Lake Road going to town. So, I'm here to ask for your support of the Washington County Road Commission's proposal to repair the base of that road in 2022, as early as possible, so that we can avoid a repeat this summer, this fall, next winter, which we've been experiencing for the last several years on Wiley Road. So, again, we'd appreciate your consideration and spending conscious funds to make that project happen this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Are there any other issues, comments?
Oh, there's one.
Oh, sorry.
Jason and I know each other because that was a volunteer organization that we should go now, but I live at 9897, and I have to deal with what Jason was saying about Wiley. In front of my house in particular, at 987, and I need to breathe, and people are causing trees, I can't drive out without them. And we're particularly one of the very bad spots always are, and sometimes I drive to the town hall, and sometimes out to, that's a tricky amount of road, bad spots, north and south, or east and west. So, yeah.
Thank you.
What is your name?
Oh, can you state your name?
State your name.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other issues, comments, concerns for board or staff members? Someone like to make a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Approval of the agenda.
Are you opening the public hearing?
Oh, I thought that was the public hearing.
No, that was public comment.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Approval of the agenda.
Oh, sorry, approval of the agenda for the public hearing. Someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion, the motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, for the public hearing, it's the proposal for fiscal year 2023, 2022, 2023 budget? Is there, what do you...
Well, I wonder...
Public hearing is at 14:00. We're going to open the public...
Ashley Colleen, that clock is not right, 6:12.
It's 6:12, okay. So, we're opening the public hearing at 6:12 for the budget for the proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023.
So, I believe that our budget actually accommodates all of the concerns that Harley raised, and I wonder if Colleen, would you like to address those comments, to address those comments of the prior supervisor?
Mark, is this the time for me to do that? Okay.
Well, you received this question. I think it would be appropriate, however, this is the public hearing portion, perhaps it would be better to open it up to the public in case there's any comments. If there's no comments, no further comments to be made on this issue in the public hearing, then you would close the public hearing, and then it would go back to the board for you to answer questions or raise questions.
Okay. So, now, we're asking for any other participation from the public. Harley?
Is this the same, is this the three minutes?
Again, this is to, I have a first public comment, so I presume it's the second public comment. The only thing I want to ask the board is, in the interest of transparency, if some of you on the board ran for more transparency than the board, it's actually been less transparent than the previous board. I would ask that a couple of things. In the general fund, we have $442,000, $443,000 in a fund deficit. Did you at least add a line item under revenue showing that that's going to be transferred into fund balance, which has been a catch factor for over a year, in the American Rescue Grant? Again, a line item that shows that the revenue that is being transferred into fund balance, or a real difference of transparency. The other one, the open space thing, you really can't fix much, you can find some way to spend some more money in their current balance, it's a third violation of state law. So, I hope that more is fixed, and we improve it otherwise, you know, all the board members will support it if it's a violation of law. So, I hope that's fixed. I would also ask this board, please, in the interest of transparency, do more line item detail, like we've developed on the fact, so that the public can know what your intentions are, and how you're spending the taxpayers' money. So, just again, line item detail helps a lot in the transparency.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on the budget? Okay. I think it's on now.
Make sure the green light is on the side, the green light on.
You can hear, it's on.
We can hear you, yeah.
So, Molly Machieski, 983 Starfield Court, and I'm just here for the comment tonight during your public hearing, to express my interest and my strong urging for you to allocate money in your budget to fix Wiley Road north of Island Lake, south, sorry, south of Island Lake, I really do know your, south of Island Lake Road, up to the Lima Township line, or East Stony Field Drive, whatever the road commission has put in their limits. As Jason mentioned, the road is deteriorated, the base is deteriorated, it really needs to be built back up, so that when the vehicular traffic comes over, especially at the rate of vehicular traffic that we have, that it will not break down so quickly. That's why you're getting the top halls, and that's why we've had such a problem with dust control. The dust control treatment that the county's doing has been effective because the road base is deteriorated. So, we're basically throwing money away right now on the short term with repairs that we're doing, so I would encourage you to allocate this money to the local. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
So, did you have a public comment?
I'm not sure what everybody else can answer on that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so any other issues, comments for the board or staff?
If there's no further public comment, formally close the public hearing.
Okay. Since there's no further public comment, would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I can second the public hearing.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. At 6:17.
That would be open to discussion in the public.
Okay.
So, I'll just repeat my invitation to Colleen to address, I know all the particular details that Harley raised, we have talked about, and there is a plan in place. So, I wondered if you wanted to speak to that, Colleen?
Sure, thank you. I guess the first term I'll make is, when, first of all, none of these budgets are in the deficit, so these are not deficit budgets, not the proper use of that term. A deficit budget would be if you use up all of your reserves, right? So, we don't have a deficit budget. And I would also mention, so, it is an old practice where if you were going to use your fund balance, that you would report that as revenue. And that process is actually going to the wayside because it is viewed as not as transparency, as letting the fund balance fall to the bottom line. So, it's very easy to see in your general fund, very easy to see in your general fund that you are going to utilize some of your reserves, right?
Colleen, excuse me, is the green light on on the base of that?
No.
That's why I wasn't reporting anything.
No, it is, no. So, we don't, we don't do that anymore. We let the negative or use of fund balance fall to the bottom line, because that's just good, more kind of care. I did want to call out a concern about your alarm system, or...
There, just warning, the warning system.
Yeah, we simply decided we didn't need a separate cost center for that. You have a building and, a building maintenance cost center, so that's just going to include there. So, we have tried to simplify some of the accounting for the AT entry. And then I did, I could speak about intergenerational equity. Now, when you closed your year in 2021, when you closed your general fund, your general fund fund balance was 400% of your annual expenditures. That exceeds all the recommended fund balances put out by the Michigan government finance officers, the government finance officers, Association of the United States and Canada. That is an excessive amount of fund balance. I think that when the board passed the fund balance policy, you took a very strong approach to making sure you did have some emergency reserves in both the general fund and the fire fund, and yet, the job is not to save money for future generations. The job is to get services done, and I think, I think this budget reflects that. And certainly, we don't want to have 400% fund balance as a percentage of annual expenditures, which is too much money. The American Rescue Plan Act, so possibly the general is not aware of the rules, this has been passed, the final rule on that, anything, any group that's receiving less than 10 million can view this as general government revenue, so anything you would normally spend governmental tax dollars on, you can spend this money. And many government entities spend money on protecting open space for their communities, right? So, this is a best of the values of that, grant money. I think, I think that was it. I actually think it's a really strong budget.
Well, I'm confused about the comment about the open space. I don't understand the, I mean, I didn't understand Mr. Ryder's comment about that, but the, but that, the open...
Do you hear the Rescue Plan?
No, the open space fund is...
Oh, the open space fund, we have a small, yeah, right. So, we will address that at the first budget amendment. We also have a budget amendment to do for the fire part.
Okay.
So, we'll take care of that. We didn't, we didn't address that now because we already published the budget. Well, that'll be resolved in the first month, right, in the year.
What, what, I don't, I don't understand it either. What will be resolved?
We started charging the open space in the effort of having transparency, the open end fund, called the Open State Fund, and we started charging all of the expenses that relate to that fund there. As a result, we're going to need just a little bit more of a transfer from the general fund if you spend all that money, right?
But with respect to the legality of it, I mean...
No, you're fine. And a budget that's an intent to spend, if you were to spend it and not, and not come up with a plan to resolve it, then we would damage it to you. So, and if you do spend, and you end up with a negative fund balance in the fund, the state will send you a letter, and you're like, what is your plan for that? But it doesn't have a certain budget process that happens, against the year when you actually spend money. So, basically, this is our plan, and we know that, okay, people are looking at how to address that, that you might be an extra $700 in there, and so you might decide to reduce the spending. We didn't give a different serial to drop, right? So, there, are there any other things you want me to clarify?
I don't. I would like to make a comment, though, about Wiley Road, which is, so there's a $600,000 request in this, in this proposed budget for local road repair, and you guys all remember that we used accident rates, road condition, and average daily traffic count to prioritize all the local roads, and we worked with the road commission. We came up with a prioritize list, and that list was approved in January by this board, and it just basically says, this is the order in which we're going to conduct the repairs. And so, if the, if the budget request of 600,000 is approved, then Wiley Road will be repaired this year, and I don't know whether it'll be early in the year or later in the year, but it'll be on the road commission's schedule for this year. And if we lower that amount, then it might or might not be in this year, because it wasn't, Wiley Road wasn't the first priority. I actually didn't bring the prioritize list with me today, but it wasn't, I know it wasn't on the top of the list. It possibly, it's, it's also possible that, like, we may not be able to do McKinley if we can't come up with an agreement with Lima Township, so, so it's not, it's not for certain that Wiley Road wouldn't be this year, but it is, it was not at the top of the list. So, to the extent that if we, I know a question has been raised in the past about whether the 600,000 is the right amount, and so, however much we approve, the road commission gave, when I, when I gave that proposal to you in January, it had a list of ones that I'm proposing for year one based on, and that was based on the 600,000, approving that 600,000, and Wiley was on that list. So, if we, if we, if we adjust that amount, then it'll have to adjust the list that goes into year one.
Can we adjust that list? Because for me, Wiley Road was one of the most important roads, just because of the rubric, the trouble on that road?
Well, we, 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 I would rather adjust, well, I mean, if we don't, if... We would then be, so we had those three criteria, the accident rate, the damaged daily traffic, and the road condition. It was, in our rubric, it was based on the recency of last major repair. So, if we adjust the list, then we are throwing out the rubric, basically, and saying, well, we're going to, we're going to let Wiley Road be a higher priority than these other roads that, that ranked higher according to those criteria. And so, if we were going to, if we think that Wiley Road, if we think that the rubric isn't working, I would rather adjust the criteria. So, if we want to say, add presence of children, for example, because you're talking about presence of children, so, so, you know, what, what is the, what is the proportion of daily users who are children or something, then, then that might adjust how we rank them. But then we have to go back and try to get data on that. So, I would prefer just to approve the $600,000, and we do have the funds for it, so if we, just go ahead and approve the 600,000, then Wiley Road will be in, will be in this year.
Yeah.
And last question, so, okay, and Wiley Road is a huge one for me, it was last year too, but looking at inflation, the fuel, with the cost of, of stone, all of that is taken into consideration.
Yes, so, yeah, so we inflated, and Colleen had the, had the foresight to inflate. I had suggested that we budget 2.5 million, and she budgeted at 3 million, and I, my budget was based on a road commission preliminary estimates from a few months ago, and indeed, the update, the updated estimates that they gave us a few, a couple of weeks ago were a lot higher than the estimates that they gave, gave a couple of months ago, but it's still within the amount that we budgeted. So, so because we budgeted more than I...
I would ask, because, for instance, me personally, aggregate and concrete, I've run up 30% as one of our contractors, and that's what, that's concerning. If we do approve this, it's a contract, it will be resolved at the...
Yes, it will, because, because we have, they've given us a contract.
What you said is the most important thing, is if we're going to approve roads, we have to, we have to follow through.
But we do, we, but remember from last year, I mean, the caveat is, so now they've given us an updated estimate, and it's a lot higher, but if the actuals come in higher than the estimate, it's not like working with a private contractor where you contract and they give it to you for the price they, they offered it for. No, if it caught, if, if, so they, they made the estimate more conservative, meaning they, they jack up the price. I think they genuinely believe that's what it's going to cost, but if it does cost more, then we are stuck paying that price. And that will influence, you know, we have plenty of reserves, as Colleen said, so I don't think that will cause us any crisis this, in year one, but the road committee that I hope to convene is going to be thinking about how we should fund local road repairs into the future, and if we see that the prices are a lot higher, it will affect whether we can afford to do it out of our general fund and general fund reserves, or if we're going to be recommending a township-wide special assessment district or a millage. It'll, so this will be a good year to see what, with inflation, how does it, how does it come in, but I personally am prepared for the possibility that it'll cost more than they're currently estimating, even though I was happy to see that their price estimate was higher, because I agree with you, I think it will, I think, I think prices are going up.
Where do we stand in negotiations on McKinley? Has that been started with Lima?
We have, and they brought it to the board, their board, Monday, but because they had a pretty full agenda, they didn't come to a conclusion on Lima Road, so they'll get back to us after their next board meeting.
That's fair.
And, and we did meet with, so, so here on River Drive and McKinley are the two that are joint with other townships, and I think Webster also has not had a, had full, I mean, they're like us, they're going through their budgetary approval now, but we have a kind of, yes, they'd like to do it, but they have to finish their budget approval process before they give us a final okay.
Does that mean some of those dollars may not be spent if, if Webster doesn't...
If Webster and Lima...
If Webster and Lima don't come in, then those dollars won't be spent, so we'll still have...
Well, or we could pull forward.
Pull forward another road.
Then that's priority, that's, and that's a question for the road commi, we'll be talking about our agreement with the road commission in April, and that's a question I have for them. If we end up having to bump a project, is the, will we be able to pull the project forward from next year?
Okay. Any other discussion on the budget?
I just want to call up on page 12. It very clearly states that the emergency preparedness was added to building maintenance. So I think this will all just be sent to us to make that count.
Yes.
Where is that?
On page 12.
Yeah.
In blue, and I think there's actually a lot of notes on this budget. Midway down to the Asian blue, it says that the expense from the emergency preparedness was added to the building maintenance. So I think this is just a judgment, to make a comment, because we aren't going to be spending money on emergency preparedness. Very clearly called out there.
And it was in the budget last year. And we did have the warning system maintained by frontline. So, and it's something we take seriously.
Wasn't that system down when we took office?
Yes, I think it was.
Yeah.
That system was down when we took office.
That system was down.
Oh, that's right, it was down when we took office.
It was unfunctional when we took office, if I remember, yeah, I thought so.
I think we have to do a little more bragging.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We fixed it.
I mean, just because, yeah, it's, just because a budget process is different doesn't mean it's wrong.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Right on, Maris.
Well, I think there were a lot of problems with the old system. I, I, I feel that. And the, and the intergenerational equity was the one that I was the most unhappy about, but I was unhappy about some other aspects of it, too. And so I'm really happy with this year's budget proposal.
And the point is to put the money back into the township, right?
Right.
Parents not save their money.
Well, and we have, we, we actually discussed the tornado and setting the emergency reserve to be able to fund at such an emergency in the future. So, so 200,000 for, for, is, is, is nothing compared to the, you know, four times our annual budget that's been sitting in the bank and there's never been a-
You have a really strong fund balance.
Yeah. Much higher, I think, than GFOA recommends, so, yeah.
Is it higher than minimum?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I think it's important for us to, to comment on that. Because I don't want our community being concerned that we're just, you know, wildly spending money and not, not prepared to deal with emergencies. What you said, Colleen, is absolutely right, is that our function, and Maris just said it too, our function is to serve the community, to be, to be careful and conservative, but to, to put our money into roads and broadband and open space and the things that this community, is important to this community and that we need. Not save it in service to building new buildings in the future or whatever your, it is. So I really appreciated the way that you, you framed that. And I think it's very important for our public to hear that and for, you know, to-
Well, you, you went through this in a good order. You first determined what was the minimum fund balance that you were comfortable with, that you wanted for emergencies and cover operating expenses. That was decision number one. And then you said, okay, now we know where we want to be based on a number of factors. We now have the extra money and we're going to spend on a T90. So you followed a very orderly process in the decision of giving the gap of one.
Right. Thank you for your assistance with it.
Got nothing.
We still have to close the public hearing.
No, you did that.
We, we did do that. Oh, okay. Where are we?
Could somebody help me out on this one?
So then is there another public comment, is that?
So now we're going into, okay, so, okay. So now we need, oh, there's Jeff.
Hey, Jeff.
Later.
Jeff McDowell is our trustee who-
We already excused you, though.
We excused you, but you're welcome to, to join us.
McDowell has arrived at the meeting, and thank you for making that effort.
Good, 6:35.
At 6:35.
I'll contain my papers now.
So now we're going to approval of tonight's agenda for the board of trustee meeting?
Wait.
Yeah, we need to vote on the budget.
Oh, I thought, okay, I'm so confused. Thank you for, everybody for your help. So now, are we?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget as presented in the packet.
Okay.
The 2022, 2023 budget.
I'll second that motion, but I do have a question. Question before we vote, and this is for Colleen, which is, so with these little minor corrections, such as the $7,000 in, in the open space fund, those we address-
And the fire, and the fire department.
And the fire department, so- So we'll address that at a future meeting, not, not tonight, is that what other-
We'll have that party on the scroll.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, does it, it's, does it, it doesn't need to be in the-
It'll just become an amendment.
No, you're fine.
We're accepting the budget. The time of the budget as is.
These are estimates as well, based on estimated projections of like, the current year will close down it, so they're all estimates.
Okay. Okay.
A motion has been made by Karen Nolte and seconded by Karen Sikenga to approve the 2020, 2022, 2023 operating bud, operating and capital budget for Dexter Township. And we'll do a roll call vote on this one for Karen Sikenga, we'll take the roll call.
Okay, Karen Nolte?
Yes.
Michelle Stamwalas?
Yes.
Diane Ratkovich?
Yes.
Maris Smith?
Yes.
Laura Sanders?
Yes.
Karen Sikenga, yes.
So the motion passes. We have a budget for 2022, 2023. It's been a lot of work, it's been a lot of, a lot to learn. And thank you very much, Colleen, for guiding us through this process, starting with the strategic planning. Really appreciate all your guidance. And it's, it's great to be here and everybody has worked really hard and it'd be insane. Thank you so much, I want to clap.
Well, it seems, I just wanted to say, it seems like it's kind of, you know, here's, we're passing our budget, but we've been working on it for what, four months now?
Yeah, exactly.
Twice a month in meetings, so if the public doesn't think we've discussed all this, woo!
Yeah, well, starting in October.
Yeah, it's been a long process.
It's been a long process.
I'm excited to spend money and, and to put things back into the community this year.
Diane, will you complete the agenda for the public hearing? We're on number six.
Second call for public comment. Wait, I think we, we did second call for public comment.
I would suggest that, um, to continue with the meeting agenda for the board trustees, there is at the end of your regular agenda, a second call for public comment. I don't think we require to have separate agendas for the public hearing. It's really part of the same thing.
Okay.
You both can throw the public hearing, take action, and see what the approval-
Should we do the approval of the agenda first?
I think you already did that, you asked, uh, fix nothing. I think you'd already approved the agenda.
Um, do we, oh, but I thought we approved the agenda for, I'm sorry. Well, I did have a couple, can we go back to number five? I have two additions for the approval of the agenda. So, um, to add to the agenda, with, uh, number, it'll be number eight F, add a resolution 22644, which will be the annual meeting calendar. I would also like to add, and Laura, I apologize to you and Michelle also, because you both asked me, I would also like to add an oral report on the open space and land preservation. And we'll make that be, after seven. So after the approval of the meeting minutes, we'll do 7A, it'll be the oral report.
Oh, not you, not a discussion item?
Well, it's more of an oral report than, it can also be a discussion. Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so we're going to leave it as 7A, oral report. And, okay. So would someone like to approve the, make a motion to appro-
Can I, can I add one thing? I, I know you asked me to give a report on broadband, which I said my meeting was Thursday and I'd do it next month, but that meeting's been canceled and I've had some conversation, so I can give a three-minute update at that time if you want.
That would be great. Okay, great. So the oral report will be on open space and land preservation and one on broadband in 7A.
So do we need to remove, um, 8A because we just did that?
May I ask a question? So you went from public hearing to closing of public hearings because of public comments, but then you, you didn't do the calls to order starting at the regular meeting?
Well, because we did that at this, we're just blinding the two together, so we did the-
And that's the point for public comment is not until the very end of the meeting?
Correct. Is that correct, Mark? That's what we just, how we just moved forward?
I'm sorry, I was distracted.
Oh, she asked that, she said, she was wondering if there would be the, another call for public comment before we went-
Yes, at the end of the meeting.
At the end of the meeting, okay.
It brought my attention that we need to, uh-
It's like a, it's separate agendas.
I know.
Right.
You only went through the, the public hearings, but then, and you did not really start the public meeting, and then, and then there was a call for public comment there.
It'd be easier if we just adjourned.
First of all, I was not consulting about the design of this meeting. Typically, um, there is one agenda for the meeting.
Yeah.
If there is a public hearing, it's typically part of the agenda for the meeting. It's not a separate agenda. Uh, I am trying to help these together without duplicating a lot of things. For instance, we only have one budget allegiance.
Yes.
In order to base this as efficient as possible. Uh, we have opened and closed the public hearing. We did receive comments, take an action on the budget. It was brought to my attention that in addition to acting on the budget, we need the resolution, uh, 22640, stop this act of events.
Yeah.
I don't see any reason why we can't wait until after the, um, approval of the agenda and minutes are done, but let's make sure we address 8A as required.
I thought we just did that, didn't we just do that?
Alex, you didn't quote, I need to, I need to adopt this in the resolution for it.
Oh, I see. So where are you saying we go next?
Well, I'm, I'm saying, proceed with the approval of the agenda.
Agenda, okay.
You've discussed that, you've made some recommendations for the amendment. Uh, vote on that, vote on the approval of the meeting minutes, vote February, February 15th, and then, um, go back to 8A and address the resolution, uh, 22640.
Okay, all right. So would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting with the additions of resolution 22644, the annual meeting calendar, and 7A will be an oral report on open space and land preservation and broadband?
I'm sorry to, to bring up an issue, but, um, I just noticed that new members of the public came in. And since this was confusing to not only me, but the public, I'm a little concerned about if people are here to make a comment that they have to wait till the very end of the meeting. I've had been in that experience as a public commenter and it's, it's really hard. So I guess I want to approve the agenda with a caveat that we invite a public comment at the beginning.
I'll second that.
Yes.
I, I would note the meeting was scheduled for six, the public hearing was scheduled for six, that the meeting was open, there was a call to the public, the first call to the public, and comments were made, the public hearing was open at 6:12, and people spoke. The meeting was, the, uh, public hearing was closed at 6:17. Uh, if you want to reopen, you're, you're welcome to. There is another public comment at the end of the meeting. But I just, I wanted to make that point that you haven't overlooked anybody or skipped anybody. Uh, things were scheduled and things have been done, and there has been a whole-
Yeah, I'm not worried about the, um, doing something wrong to somebody. I'm just concerned about making it, you know, this as accessible as possible.
Yeah, this is, this is the confusion, that we had two agendas. I, I happen to agree with Laura, I think the two agendas have been confused.
Right.
And I, I see no reason not to do a public call now and then walk through, pick it up at number four and walk through the, the packet. That's just my feeling. It's confusing with two agendas, so I get it.
All right.
Madam Chair, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
If, if that's the process you're going to follow, um, I would suggest having the calls in public now.
Okay.
After the calls in the public, I would suggest addressing 8A.
Okay.
Having done the budget.
Okay.
And then go back to-
Number five.
... agenda five.
Okay, I can do that, thank you. Okay, so, for the board meeting, we'll have the first call for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Please step up to the mic, say your name, and address.
So, no, I just have one comment and one question. Uh, so thank you for discussing things that agenda was confusing to me, I appreciate that. Um, my comment is that I really applaud the board for recognizing that preservation of open space is an important issue, um, protection of our, our natural waters and our natural features is, is very high on my priority list, and I think everybody is in consensus, and so thank you. Um, question that I had was really about the roads. And I know I heard talk about accident rates, traffic counts. And I just wondered, and I know, and I'm expected to answer it now, but, um, curious on when those traffic counts were last done and how long the road commission kept out their traffic numbers. Because my observation on Wiley was that it was left out for just one day, which isn't sufficient when you look at transportation standards on that issue.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So we're closing the first call for public comment of the meeting, and we will now move down to 8A, the resolution number 22640, the Dexter Township General Appropriations Act adoption of 2023 budget. Someone like to make a motion?
Looking for the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 22640, the Dexter Township General Appropriations Act adoption of 2023.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Yeah, okay, let's try this again. Karen, would you like to take a roll call?
Yes, Karen Nolte.
Yes.
Jeff McDowell?
Yes.
Michelle Stamwalas?
Yes.
Diane Ratkovich?
Yes.
Maris Smith?
Yes.
Laura Sanders?
Yes.
Myself, Karen Sikenga, yes.
Motion passes. The resolution number 22640, Dexter Township General Appropriations Act adoption of 2023 budget is accepted. Yay! Thank you, every, thank you everyone for your patience, we're learning. Now we will go back to the approval of the agenda, which has already been amended and a motion's been made to approve it and second it. So we, I think we can just go forward with the vote on the agenda, I think, has that, am I right, Janice?
You haven't got, uh, a motion yet.
Oh, I didn't get a motion, I thought we did. Okay, someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended, thank you.
I'll second.
Here's.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next item is approval of the minutes of February 8th, 2020. Someone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 8th, 2022 meeting. Maris Smith, second.
Any discussion, any changes? We'll take a voice count. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Oh, Karen, I'm getting here.
I think that we should actually amend the, the, the minutes just slightly to say, on the bottom of page three, Barry Lannick was hired on a, on a professional services contract because I think the professional services was the key. Because it's professional services, the competitive bid isn't necessary. It's not the fact that it was a contract, but that it was- Because it's professional services, the competitive bit isn't necessary. It's not the fact that it was a contract, but that it was.
Karen, you're on the February fifteenth meeting minutes. We just did February eighth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Never mind.
Okay, so now we have a motion and a second.
It's hard when we have so many meetings.
Of the February, of approval of the February eighth minute, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion approved. Now, approval of the meeting minutes on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Karen, would you like to make an amendment?
Yeah, I just want to add. I just wanted to add the, where it says with a contract, I wanted to say with a professional services contract. That's it.
Professional services contract.
I don't know if it's officially done, but on the header of the document, it's on both February eighth and the January.
On February?
February fifteenth. The date January eighteen appeared at the top of the header.
Okay.
That's what confused me. Up here, this is just wrong.
I didn't see that.
Okay.
The header has never changed.
Yeah, you could just delete the date from the header.
Okay. So approval, would someone like to motion up to approve the February fifteenth meeting minutes with the addition of striking the header date and adding professional services contract on page three of four?
I'll move to approve the minutes as amended.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minutes are accepted from both meetings. So the next item is number eight B, the resolution for the adoption of a fourth quarter budget amendment.
Dana, are we going to do an oral report?
Seven A. Oh, we're going back to seven A. Thanks, guys. Let's keep me on track here. Let's do some oral reports. Open Space and Land Preservation Committee.
Okay. Michelle and I have been pursuing the Open Space and Land Preservation Committee, and we have accomplished a lot in our new calendar year, and, and there's also a lot of activity coming up. So I just wanted to make sure that the board was informed. We meet the first Thursday of every month at seven o'clock, but it's probably going to be moved to eight o'clock now that daylight savings time is, is going because our farm, our farmer person and farmers need it to be later so that they can attend. And it's, it meets here on the first Thursday of every month, and all public is, is welcome. We would love to have public. So, so since the new year, we've done a few things. We've obtained an approval for our millage proposal of point five mills for land preservation efforts. So there's going to be a big push to get that millage, millage on the ballot, right? And there's a lot of deadlines to take care of, and we'll be bringing those, we'll be bringing it to the board as we do it, okay? We applied to the federal fund and the Consumer Energy Program for the Monier property, which was our original pilot project that we voted on last year. And we did not get the state funding for that, but we're now hoping for federal funds, and we did the special consumers' energy proposal. We provided a really successful outreach to selected landowners in the form of a special event at the Dexter Town Hall here on March third, and it was during the evening. And we had put out about twenty invitations to selected landowners where, that where, who owned large swaths of farmland primarily and might be interested in land preservation. And, you know, we expected a few folks to show up, and we actually got about fifty community members that were here. We were really surprised in some ways at the, at the amazing, you know, participation. It, it inspired a lot of interest. Our land preservation expert, Ginny Lycum, and our farm expert, Dale Lesser, both presented. We brought in three farmers from, who had already sold their development rights and had gone through that process from neighboring townships, and they kind of talked about the, the process, and they talked about their philosophies as to why they did it, and some of their fears that they had, and how those fears were alleviated. And it was just really a lovely event. And I just want the board, there might have been a little bit of question about, you know, invitations, like more, you know, more, more invitation to the board. And I wanted to just be clear that we were really kind of careful about this meeting because it was an open meeting, of course, but we, you know, we, we felt that it was important to keep it small and kind of, and, and really for the landowners so that it's not a big, there's not a lot of advertisement as to who those people are. And, and, you know, it's a, these folks are oftentimes pretty private people, the farmers, right? And so that they could learn about it, yeah. And so it wasn't a big community event, however. And so, so we didn't put out like major invitation about it. But we are going to have a big community event. We're hoping to ramp up for a really nice, like celebration of farm, of our farmers, of our local farmers, of farmland preservation. We'd like to do it in the summer where, you know, everybody can come and learn about farmland preservation and conservation. But that one was a smaller networking event. Since then, we have Barry Lonik, who is our consultant, our contracted consultant. We have met with an interested landowner who came to that meeting and immediately wanted to meet with us, and we've met with that person. So future activities, what we'll be doing, our committee will be kind of, our committee was mission. We were charged to do education and engagement for a year, and we will be giving way to a more formal board, an official board that will include, we're still figuring out all of the aspects of it, but it, it will have five to seven people on it, members, and one, one trustee or one person from the Board of Trustees. And that committee will be charged with, you know, looking at applications, creating criterion, scoring criterion, and that kind of thing for, for properties that would be coming into our program. The other piece is that we will be needing to campaign for the millage, and that cannot be a board. That's not something that the board does. That's something that citizens do. And people, anybody can join in campaigning for the land preservation millage, okay? But we can't do that as board members. We can't do that as official, as officials from the, from the township. But we can join in as citizens, and anyone in the public can help to, you know, promote a yes, a yes vote on the millage for land preservation. So we'd love help with that. And we'll be putting those two committees together in the summer. And then there's just, as I had stated before, there's just lots of deadlines and pieces to getting a millage passed. And we're all just learning, and we're doing the best we can, and we just ask for a certain amount of patience. Next, next April, I mean, this April, we will be, right now, we're reviewing ordinance thirty-seven. Our committee will be approving changes that committee members and Barry Lonik have represented, have, have suggested. We'll be approving that and then bringing it to the board. Yeah. So, you know, it's going through our committee, and then it's coming to the board, and that'll be at the April board meeting where we, we need you guys to, we need us all to look at that ordinance and approve it.
And will that, that, that will be when you, will the ordinance thirty-seven changes be where you make your recommendations about the number of members and all?
Yes. All of that will be resolved, all that's in ordinance thirty-seven. So it'll all be resolved by, by then. And then we'll bring that proposal to you guys, and you can decide if it looks good. Okay, so did I leave anything out? Michelle, you have anything else to add?
Just a couple things we did on the postcard, not only on the review of the hearing, myself as a board, but we did send out a postcard.
That's right, we did.
And we were very fortunate to receive an email from Chris Olson to the Huron Valley Watershed Council.
Right.
I was, unfortunately, Laura was looking to attend. We had it during the working day, which was actually difficult to attend. But she was pretty amazing. She's also reached out to Scioto Township, Northfield Township, as well as Wester Township, where all three of them have had campaign and have successful knowledge of their communities. So they are very excited to work with Dexter Township for endeavoring on bringing, in the hope to, to bring land preservation to our community. Pretty much she did, and I will make copies of it with. But she gave timelines of, kind of all about campaigning, of course, with all that fun stuff about campaign financing and donations. But, so she, she was wonderful with, with loads of information in the area, especially when it's a successful campaign, raising funds, yard signs, flyers, door-to-door community campaigning. So there will be additional Zoom opportunities in the future. And she's also in the, so we've been invited to see her on a group chat. So she's going to continue with working hard for the community, and I'm on this list of, long list of items to make sure our campaign can do itself.
Great. Thanks for being there, Michelle, at that meeting.
You know what? And another thing, it was a, it was a really nice Zoom, but I guess I can throw this out here. One thing that they were wanting to do is there are so many communities that, of course, want to preserve green space. And they would like it to, I don't know, the community to have, you know, maybe some more slogan. For instance, one was pretty good. But to go ahead and say we could be, well, anyway, land preservation Dexter Township, preservation Scioto Township, and if we all had that idea.
Yeah.
People would be like, oh, I've heard of this, or, oh, this is interesting, or unfamiliar.
We might coordinate on the slogan of it.
Mm-hmm.
Nice.
So, do you guys remember that we all signed, or we, we approved a, like a letter of support for the Huron River Watershed Council, because they applied for funding to help us with our ordinance reviews, in particular with a focus on water preservation. So, so they asked for funding to, to go out so that their staff can come to townships and help us with water preservation and preservation of the watershed. So I'm just bringing that up because if you're already working with her and connected to her, you might run that ordinance past her too, you know, because they're working on that.
Yeah, and Mark was at that meeting too. Mark Teicher is on our committee, and he's really like a representative for lakes and water and land surrounding the lakes. So, and he was at that committee meeting. So, yeah.
That's great. That's great. It's just that the Watershed Council does ordinance reviews, so.
Yeah.
It's just another reason.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Karen, would you like to update us on broadband?
Sure. The broadband task force meeting for this coming Thursday has been canceled, and I talked to, it's Chris, right, Jason? Who's, who's handling the project manager for the county. It does appear that Charter has been awarded the majority of the gap funding. Well, let's back up. We know there's two fundings of broadband in our township. One's Ardauf, and one is the gap funding under the ARPA from the county. So the ARPA funds handled, when we started, we had seventy-seven homes identified that were not covered under Ardauf. And so we did our little, we did our campaign to uncover. We now have a hundred and fifty homes that are going to be identified under the gap funding. They're negotiating contracts and agreements right now. It appears Charter will handle most of that. It's not finalized, but the good news is that Charter has expressed intentions that they would like to start this year, which is great for the gap finding, for the gap funding, a hundred and fifty homes under gap. The other homes under Ardauf will be under the Mercury. That's not as, not as likely to happen immediately. We haven't finished, contracts are not finished with Mercury. They have not responded everything. So I don't have a lot of update on the Ardauf funding homes, but for the gap funding homes, those hundred and fifty people, it looks very well. Looks good. Thanks, Jason. You did a lot of work on it. But for them to start this year would be amazing, to start running cable. And I have had reports from residents that people are out measuring, and it's Charter that is out measuring and figuring out where, how to lay their cable, so.
Where did the seventy-seven come from, and how did you get a hundred and fifty?
The seventy-seven came from a survey that was done three or four years ago under the old administration. And then, remember, we went on the campaign and we publicized, and we got up to a hundred and fifty, so.
Really good job.
So Karen, I've been meaning to ask you.
Yes, your address is on there, Michelle. I do have the list of a hundred and fifty. I've been asked not to make it public, but I did look, and your home is on there.
Is that the question?
At last.
It was one of the ones that were added.
Thank you. Good job.
Good job, you guys.
Good job.
Good work.
The next resolution is number twenty-two six forty, oh, we, we're moving on. Resolution twenty-two six forty-one, adoption of fourth quarter budget amendment. Would someone like to make a motion to approve this amendment?
What is it for?
It's the budget amendment to.
Where is it?
Balance the twenty-two budget, twenty twenty-two budget. Pages six and seven. Remember, we're going to make a motion. We'll get it on the table, and then we'll have discussion.
So the majority of this is housekeeping.
Yeah, housekeeping.
The board decided to change from fire station maintenance to the fire fund, and so this reduces the budget of the general fund. The board approved the two thousand per man plan, and so only twenty thousand can be budgeted. So that increases its authority, and then we moved down to the fire fund, and this is where we increased the budget. Exactly equal to what the general fund was. And then we talked about this with the fire chief, your speed to your fire station, or your fire authority, I think, sorry. And then the last one is the multi-lake center crisis. The board directed that check, because of that, we have a bunch of.
So when we approve an expenditure, that is a separate process than approving a budget amendment?
So it is. You can do them simultaneously. So if you had a resolution that approves the expenditure and appropriates the budget, then it'll be handled together. And if you don't do it at the same time, then we just come down.
Do it once a quarter.
And clean it up, yeah.
Gotcha.
Very typical process.
Gotcha.
Michelle, did you? Did you wanna say something?
No.
But it's good.
Would the board check and make sure the green lights are on each other?
Mine is.
My green light is on.
Yep.
What happens if you push your button?
The green light is on?
We'll loan you a mic.
We'll loan, we'll put.
We will share a mic.
There we go. If you want to give it on what underneath. I live around you and they're both.
We'll check. He'll just have to speak up into Jeff's microphone.
Look at that. Look at this guy. You okay?
No, that was.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the budget amendment for Dexter Township, Resolution 22641?
So moved. 22641, Resolution 22641. I'll make the, I'll make the, God, I'm brain dead. Thank you. The motion to approve Resolution 22641 as written.
Maris Matt second.
Can I make?
I think the time change is getting to us. I don't know. It's been.
Can I make a comment? So in the, just in light of some of what's been said earlier today, I am very pleased that for the first time in many years Dexter Township is not approving an 11th period, a period 11 budget amendment to make our budget equal our actuals. It was a terrible process that was really anti-transparency. The fact that we're not doing that this year is wonderful and I think we should acknowledge that this is a best practice, that it had, that so, we had, just one sort of accusing us of a lack of transparency, which I'm offended by. And this, what we're doing right now is very transparent. It is hiding information if you pass a budget that makes your actuals equal your budget as your final amendment. And then you have an audit that compares your budget to your final expenses. It's, it really.
It hid money.
It really hides the fact that you're under expending and doing this intergenerational wealth building essentially, which is improper. And so this is just a much more proper process and I'm, and I thank you, all of you for agreeing to kind of amend and reform our budget processes. I'm so much more comfortable with this process this year. So I really appreciate everybody's efforts, but especially Diane and Colleen on this matter. Love this fourth quarter adjustment.
That's fairly minor.
Yes, I love this minor fourth quarter adjustment that does not hide our budget variance. It preserves our budget variance for the auditor, which I think is the best practice.
Thank you, Karen.
Well said. Did anybody second the motion?
It's been seconded.
Maris seconded.
So we can, Karen, would you like to take a roll call vote?
Sure. Karen Nolte.
Yes.
Jeff McDowell.
Yes.
Michelle Stamwalles.
Yes.
Diane Radkovich.
Yes.
Maris Matt.
Yes.
Laura Sanders.
Yes.
Myself, Karen Sekanga, yes.
Motion approved. The next item is the consumer, the second reading of the Consumers Energy franchise, ordinance number 44. Anybody have any comments about that or like to make a motion to move forward? We had, two meetings ago, we had Stephanie Blood here from Consumers talking about it, but this is just our second reading. Would you like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 44, Consumers Energy Company Gas Franchise Ordinance?
I'll move to approve ordinance 44 for the Consumers Energy franchise.
A second?
I'll second it. I'm just curious, why is it ordinance 44 instead of, you know, 22-44?
Oh, why doesn't it have the year? They don't?
Well, why is it in a diff, why is it, it's just in a different sequence from everything?
Well, I had the budget things together, you know, for the resolutions A and B and then the ordinance just came next.
Oh, I know why. It's because it's an ordinance.
Then a resolution number, yeah. Is that what you're, I'm sorry, that's what you're asking? Okay. And then, I think we can just, well, let's take a roll call on this.
A roll call.
Because it's an ordinance, I think that would be important.
Karen Nolte.
Yes.
Jeff McDowell.
Yes.
Michelle Stamwalles.
Yes.
Diane Radkovich.
Yes.
Maris Matt.
Yes.
Laura Sanders.
Yes.
Myself, Karen Sekanga, yes.
Okay. Resolution, oh, sorry, ordinance number 44 passed. And then the next item is Resolution number 22642, creation of a road committee. And this is led by Karen Sekanga. Karen, would you like to talk about the?
Well, I think this is just, is the, I'm having trouble finding the proposed ordinance, but this is just the culmination of lots of discussions that we've been having over preceding months. And I think everybody has expressed an interest in a local roads committee. And I've been, I'm sure you guys have seen, as I've CC'd you on emails, I've been recruiting every person that writes me an email about, no, that's okay, about.
Roads.
About roads. Has to hear that we're hoping to have a local roads committee. And there's a lot of work, I think, that this committee can do. We, I'd like them to look at funding mechanisms, best practices like, empty, Molly's gone, but, you know, Molly was mentioning best practices. How can we strategize to get better responsiveness from the road commission? Are there policy changes that could, that we could advocate for at the state level or locally that might result in better road conditions? So lots of work, I think, that could be done by volunteers. And so I'd like to be able to recruit some and get them working on it.
Can I ask a question while you're talking? Can you explain our relationship for the public with the County Road Commission? Because we get, I handle the info at Dexter Township and we get, I just, I don't think people understand that the township just can't go out and fix a road. And that our relationship with Washtenaw County Road Commission.
Yes, thank you.
They, it's something we need to educate public on.
Yeah, and I mean, I would like for Mark or Colleen to correct me if I say anything wrong, but my understanding is that we don't, that the local roads are owned by the road commission, not by, not by the township. That only the road commission has the authority to repair the roads. So we can't, we can't go out for a competitive bid and choose the best bidder. It's the road commission or no one. The road commission, the county does have the option of disbanding the road commission and folding road repair into the public works department. There was a movement to do that in 2019 and it kind of fell short. It would really take a lot of support from all of the townships, I think, to get, to convince the county to do that. There's been a road commission in Washtenaw County for a long time. The road commissioners are appointed by the, by the Washtenaw County Board of Commissions, but they're not appointed, I mean, they're not elected, so they're not directly accountable to the voters. So there's, and we don't get a service level agreement from the road commission necessarily or, or really, we don't have much, much authority over the road commission. We're the only real funder for, for local roads. Primary roads and other, other categories of roads have other funding sources available to them. Local roads do not, except for that little match. So there's, there'll be a $53,000 match this year from the, for local roads and it amounts to very little per mile of road. So, so it's a difficult position to be in because we can't require them to, it's not like hiring a contractor where you can say, we want you to use this, this practice or we want you to use this material or we're not gonna pay you if you don't, if your work isn't up to par. We don't have the authority to do any of that. But I, I'm hopeful that we may be able to politic it a little bit and influence, maybe, maybe create some influence, maybe talk to some other township trustees, see if there's general interest in Washtenaw County and working with the road commission to be a little bit more responsive. So I have ideas, but we really don't have authority, so we have to find other ways to influence them.
I like the idea of collaborating with other townships that are frustrated as well.
Yeah.
And, and putting some diplomatic pressure on them.
Yeah, it's just time consuming, you know, there's 20, there's 20 townships, so, you know, it requires lots of different conversations with lots of different people.
Right.
So I'd like to add a stakeholder that could be part of this group that my, I will do credit where credit is due, my daughter identified, which are the school bus drivers. Roads that I live on have become difficult for, it's one bus in particular to navigate because of a pretty significant washout. And, you know, that's kids bouncing around a bus and, you know, I think that's not a good thing, so.
Well, I have, I have reached out to the school district to talk to them about how important local road repair would be. And though they said, yes, they're unhappy with the, with the condition of the local roads, they, they have so many priorities on their plate that they didn't really want to dive into an advocacy role on that. School bus drivers might be different. I didn't reach out to the bus drivers.
Are they humanized?
Well, I was just, I happen to know there's at least two bus drivers that are residents of Dexter Township and so my open call for any bus drivers that live in Dexter Township should be a member of your board.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I've already recruited some of the people in this audience. If you talk to me about roads, be prepared to be, it's for me to ask you for your time.
Coming after you.
I love that you're, you're suggesting a committee. I am so on board. The garbage trucks. When they have to pull over, these roads are so soft and in the late fall, a garbage truck flipped over.
Yeah, I saw your picture. Oh, my gosh.
On Quigley Road and it took out a good five feet of that road and they came and patched it up and it's so incredibly soft and people that don't know, if you try to take the two cars down, I'm waiting for a vehicle to flip over. They have a spring fed pond and that water, all filters. It's put in deep water as well.
I mean, the thing is, the road, there is no money for local road repair, so, so I don't want to just say the road commission is, is, it's not all the road commission's fault and I think they're in a difficult position.
It's the state coming in.
There is no state funding for local roads and one of the things I'm unhappy about is that.
They're for primary.
Well, and there's no mechanism to basically ask for, ask for a road to be reclassified from local to primary until it's paved. So there's this intrinsic catch 22 here. It costs a million dollars a mile compared to a hundred thousand dollars per mile to pave versus just repair a gravel road. And most townships can't afford, so we're talking Wiley Road or Huron River Drive where I live, it would, that would, that would add $2 million to the price. So it would cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $2.5 million or more to pave Huron River Drive and we just don't have that kind of money. So, so for townships to be the only source of funding, so that, what that means is if a road like Wiley or a road like Huron River Drive changes in use over time, then such that the, that the average daily traffic count increases substantially, and Huron River Drive, it happened because of the removal of Bell Road, of the Bell Road Bridge, there's, I mean, there are, there are criteria by which the primary roads were established versus the local roads. And if something changes, there's no mechanism for you to go back to them and say, this road is no longer functioning as a local road, it's functioning as a primary road. They will come back and say, well, we will not consider changing the classification until it's paved.
That's no fair.
And in the case of Wiley Road and Huron River Drive, which are the two roads that I believe should be primary roads, it's just too, we just don't have the funding.
Right.
And, and I feel that if the road commission was part of the county instead of a separate entity, then the director of public works, let's say, I mean, I wish Molly, Molly were still here, but, but then you'd have Theo looking at the system as a whole and advocating for county funding to address, you know, a road like Huron River Drive, if there's 2,000 people using it every day and it's no longer functioning as a local road, there are additional county funds even. Or, or could there be state level legislative changes or policy changes that could allow you to request a variance? Like, hey, will you consider reclassifying this road prior to it being paved? So those are things that I want this committee to be thinking about. I wish the road commission was thinking about these kinds of things and had a lobbyist or had, you know, but I think they're just paddling as hard as they can to do what they can with the little bit of money that they have. And so I don't, I don't really blame them, them, but there, but there are, there's a reason why, you know, Michigan has, I think, the 40, we're the 49th lowest per road mile, bit, funding per mile in the, in the country, which I think for a state that is dependent on car, the car industry is really shameful and.
Our weather too. I mean, it's just.
I mean, it's just, so it's, you know, there's, there's, there are issues that are above the road commission's pay grade or ability to control also. So I don't want to so much point the fingers at them as start thinking about, well, what could we recommend or request that would, and I do think that roads are very nonpartisan, so these could be the things that we talk to our people that are campaigning now for state office. You know, it seems to me that you would be popular if you had a platform around road policy changes and stuff like that.
Great explanation.
Too much. It was probably TMI.
It's not too much.
It's not TMI, we all need to learn about.
It's the direct opposite. I think we need to write something up like this and we have our in the loop. That's the kind of stuff we should be putting out to residents. So if we do want to start lobbying state representatives and, you know, every project has two tiers, the immediate and the five, 10-year plan, start lobbying state legislative to addressing these issues, not get our community on board. It doesn't cost anything, you do everything electronic. It's just building the knowledge.
That's right.
And Maris, I think if you, if you or Matt did a pie chart that shows where your tax dollars go with a little tiny slice of the pie for Dexter Township.
Please.
That says, hey, this is what pays for your elections and your tax collection and dispersment and all your land use stuff and your road repair. And all the rest of this goes to everybody else because everybody comes back and says, I pay high taxes, it should cover my roads. Well, that's not the way, that's not, that's not how fund accounting works.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Oh, that would, oh, send it over, please.
I would attach that to every email that I send about roads.
I was thinking, I, you know, I was getting, we were getting a lot of emails and I understand, you know, I mean, I'm on a dirt road too and it's terrible, but.
And we paid high taxes.
We, yeah.
It's just that none of it is, is for local roads.
Right.
Well, I sympathize with the road commission and I do understand these roads do not have a proper base at all, period. Let's just face it. The practice of chloride, when the roads are already in such disarray and it just 10 times faster degrades these roads and to the point where they aren't fixable.
Take the brine money.
Right, and that's what I mean about, you know, if you have a service level agreement with them, yeah, there are things that they do.
Take the brine and use it in rock. Take the brine money and use it for rock, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I think they should do too.
So I love having a committee.
Your committee's gonna be busy.
Yeah.
Karen, I want to be sitting right there.
Does someone want to make a motion to approve, to create a Dexter Township Road Committee that will report to the Dexter Board of Trustees, Resolution number 22642?
I'll make a motion, Resolution 22642, to create a Dexter Township Road Committee that will report directly to the Dexter Board of Trustees.
I will second.
We all wanted to.
For seconding.
Michelle.
Okay, I think this one should have a roll call vote for sure.
Okay, Karen Nolte.
Yes.
Jeff McDowell.
Yes.
Michelle Stamwalles.
Yes.
Diane Radkovich.
Yes.
Maris Matt.
Yes.
Laura Sanders.
Yes.
Myself, Karen Sekanga, yes.
Congratulations. It's exciting.
I hope everyone's friendly with the next one.
You'll be getting an email from.
She's a tough recruiter.
Well, I want to have, I want to have a committee and, and a bunch of subcommittees.
Okay, so now we're on to 8E and this is a resolution to purchase the BSNA paycheck program and somehow on this agenda got left off, also for the, the building department net, which will be used in the, in zoning. So I was hoping that David could tell us a little bit about what the value is in the BSNA program for the building department. And a few other things from his office.
Oh, that's this one. Okay.
Yes.
Oh, it's the one, yeah, I got it.
BSNA, I think that's, yeah, but, yeah, it's a part of the community development, BSNA building inspection and permitting module, it's pretty much a standard, it's common, it allows track, all permits, all projects, all inspections, we're really going to solve that, and it's digitized, which we have a process to compile files and, and perform, so, this will just basically bring us pretty much in the fourth century.
Yeah, that's about time.
Yeah!
Well, yeah, we have the quote for that, um, and I, um, we could, um, talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Uh, I think, so, um, master plan update, um, we are about a quarter of the way to, I think, visiting conditions portion, we have a draft survey that's going to be reviewed by the city of the two weeks, um, so we're pretty much on schedule, so we'll get to, um, end to end, um, we'll start covering the day in the spring, um, so we've been going pretty well, it's, uh, very familiar to me, it's a very familiar, but it's a, it's a township, pretty awesome, it's pretty happy.
Okay, good, thank you.
Well, I think both these modules are excellent choices. BSNA is kind of the de facto standard. It's, it's where we need to be, so.
And I can comment, too, on how cash receiving and implementing that program is just amazing, and, yeah, so, pay, having paychecks be a part of that, and then also planning and zoning is amazing.
Will, will this be our third, uh, computerization upgrade in our year?
Yeah.
It's because we did, we did treasury, and we'll do clerk, and then, okay.
Is this the last module? The budget is already in BSNA, right?
Yeah.
So, this will be the last module.
Is there anything else that we're going to be computerizing, updating this year? Is there anything else needed? Well, we know that one, yeah, that one's budgeted for, yeah. Up to, update your system, Janice.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, we are on board. Oh.
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry.
The recording, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
It's, 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 um, people, that one, oh, it's pretty hot, but a couple of other quotes should be coming in, so, we will be monitoring, updating this and simplifying it, so, we'll get, somebody else.
Thank you, Janice.
Thank you. Do you, do you know, will that be like May? Will it be, should be done by May, or what are, we don't know?
So, we may have a contract, we may have a bid, I mean, but equipment is another task, equipment, equipment ready, and our review is, is suffering.
No chips.
Exactly. If, if supply chain issues are affecting that, too, so, um, it's, it's up and running, the live streaming and the recording, so, we'll be patching until we can, until we're done.
Great, thank you. Thanks for your hard work on that, David.
So needed.
Right.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to, um, pass resolution number 22643 of, to approve the purchase of BSNA software of payroll.net and permitting.net?
Sure, I, I will offer to pass resolution 22643, purchase of the BSNA paycheck and permitting programs.
I will second.
And since this involves paying money, um, we think we should do a roll call.
Karen Nolte?
Yes.
Jeff McDull?
Yes.
Michelle Stambullos?
Yes.
Diane Rakovich?
Yes.
Maris Mertz?
Yes.
Laura Sanders?
Yes.
Myself, Karen Sekanga, yes.
Okay. The mat, the motion, the resolution 22643 passes unanimously. Awesome. Okay, the last resolution is 22644, the annual meeting calendar, which is before you. Does anyone have any questions or changes on that? Yeah, that's, that was the addition, that was one of them. Oh, okay, so it's first, first Tuesday for zoning board of appeals, second Tuesday, or third Tuesday, third Tuesday.
Is this, is it, is it unreal for us to, as, you know, we went through this year's budget, and we did workshops every month for like, for four months, is it worth putting those workshops for next year's budget just so the public is aware? Or do we just keep calling the special meetings? I'm just wondering. I mean, it worked out very well.
Yeah.
We worked through a lot of idiosyncrasies and-
I think when we get closer to the time, we could do one meeting for, you know, one time, and then just post it one time.
And post it, yeah, for all of them.
Oh, let's do it next week. Oh, let's do it next week.
Yeah, it's, yeah. It seems like we did, I can't imagine we're not going to do it again. It's a lot of discussion, so.
Mark?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to point out that the purpose of this resolution is consistent with the open meetings act in that these are the regularly scheduled repeating, or less firm scheduled meetings throughout the year, as opposed to a, some type of special budget, where you may want some flexibility in scheduling.
Yeah, just, just a comment, and, and I'd like to say, David, uh, it was the December 27th Planning Commission, um, sitting there between Christmas and New Year's.
Right.
Yeah.
Planning to bump that up earlier in the month, that, that seemed like a interesting idea.
I'm talking, I mean, that, obviously, that would be, that's, that's, so, you can't, so.
Okay, fine, fair enough.
It's just, um, it's, it's, I try not to hold it close to this now.
You'd have a lot of excused absences.
Okay, and someone make, like to make a motion to-
I'll make a motion, uh, to accept resolution 22644, which outlines all the meeting dates for the Dexter Township Ford, the Dexter Township Planning Commission, and the Dexter Township Zoning Board of Appeals for the next upcoming budget year.
Michelle Stambullos, support.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Resolution number 22644 passed. So, we're done with resolutions, and now we're moving on to discussion. Um, we've given notice on the house, the Dexter Township owns the house next door, the one towards North Territorial, 6900 Dexter Pinckney Road, we've had the same tenant for many years, and she's been an excellent tenant, and she gave us notice, um, she was, her contract required a 90 days in day notice, so, but she's at, which would have brought her till the beginning of May, but she's asking if she could vacate on March 31st, which would be 35 days earlier without any penalty, um, she did give notice on February 5th. And so, my thoughts on it were, would be to allow the current tenant to vacate without penalty, since she's been such an excellent tenant, that, um, continue, Reinhardt Realtors is the manager for the property right now, and if they rent the home out, they will charge us the first month's rent, and then if they manage the house, then it's 10% monthly for management fees, and basically, you know, they just, they're the people that talk to the tenant, and, um, that talk to the tenant, and then make arrangements either with their hand demand to a certain limit, or, you know, ask us what kind of repairs we want to make that we'd have to approve. But I was suggesting that once the property is vacated, I would say that we let her go at the end of the month without penalty, and then once the property is vacated, I think it would be really good to get a home inspector in, hire a professional home inspector, to really evaluate the age of the roof, um, there've been reports of water in the basement, we didn't really, Maris and I went and walked through when she lived there, and she had a lot of things in the basement, we didn't see evidence of it, but find out if there are any foundation problems, have the electrical checked out, we do have the furnace and air conditioning serviced every year, so we're going to get an update on, um, you know, the longevity of the, of mechanicals from the heating and cooling company. But just have a, a real thorough inspection so we know, and we can make a long-term plan for that house, and, um, I know, you know, who's kind of tossed it back and forth about selling it or not selling it, at this point, I'm really, I think we should keep it in our portfolio for the township, there's so many things we could do with the property over a long period of time, and basically, it doesn't, it pretty much comes out to be a wash in, um, price, we do pay taxes on it, so, and not homestead taxes also, so, um, and I would suggest that, you know, once we get the inspection, we make any necessary improvements and repairs, and then we rent the property out for somewhere between 1,800 to $2,000 a month, I think, I mean, it has a fantastic three-bay garage, it's on a little, right around an acre of land, it's, you know, right next door, it's a great location, so close to Bearclaw, you never have to bake coffee again. So, that's my, those are my suggestions, but I want to have that discussion here, and see where the board would like to move with our house next door.
Dan, can we, can we break those into a couple chunks?
Yeah.
So, uh, starting with the first one, I, I, I don't, I don't see any reason why we can't, um, let her lease expire early, so I don't know if anybody has any thoughts.
I agree.
Settle that one. Um, as far as the property, uh, you know, before we, the decision will be later, but before we get confronted with, um, large capital costs, let's say hypothetically, new roof or something, uh, just in the spirit of having all the options, I, I'd be curious what it might cost to have the house removed, uh, we don't, we don't have to keep it as a house, but I do, would like to keep the land, uh, as open land, not that it's practical, I don't know.
No.
It's a $20,000 house, and $19,000 remove it? I'd like to know that.
I don't even think it's that much.
I still would prefer to not have a house, not have a rental house as a township. I don't think that's a typical township, uh, activity. I think we have an underutilized ground floor in this building, and so for me, the idea that, that we're going to activate and run a program in that building, I mean, as a person that's run programs, I think that's taking on a lot, and, um, I'd rather have the money to use for something that's a little bit more, um, central to our purpose as a township. But I think your ideas, Diane, I, your idea of getting an inspector in there, and I mean, I like, I would be more supportive of the idea of having vacant land right next door, which is a lot lower maintenance and a lot easier, you know, I mean, a lot less of a, of a risk, I mean, so we've had a great tenant, that's great, what if the next tenant is terrible? That's, that's going to be, you know, we're not, you know, so.
We're not landlords.
Yeah, I mean, so, so it's risky to run a, it's, having a, having a house for rent is like running a little unrelated business, um, and it's not my first choice, but I like your idea of having an inspector in there who can help us understand the value and the risk of the house, I like your idea of releasing her without penalty, um, and then, once we have the results of the inspection, we can get back together and talk about what, 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 we can debate what we, what we think, I know some people like the idea of having that space available for future opportunities, so, I think we can talk about that in the future when we have data in front of us about what the, what the condition of the house is.
What's it?
What's a rural residential?
Okay, so, we couldn't have our agri center there.
I know, it's coming.
You know, that was, that was-
I knew, you opened that door.
Yes, we could, probably.
We could probably, maybe have a little farmer's market.
Michelle, this is where you sit.
That doesn't have to be, an agri center, like, it doesn't have to be zoned, uh, um, commercial, does it, to have a-
To have a commercial business?
To have a business. It doesn't have to be, it has to be zoned commercial.
It's going to be a primary or a commercial, I don't know.
Okay.
See, I kind of like Karen Nolte's idea, you know, the recycling center next door.
Take back our parking lot.
I think it's a, I, I think it's an excellent-
I kind of like the idea of take, making that house disappear, depending on the cost. I mean, we're not making any money on it, it's, it's a break even.
Well, it's a wash when we get the rent, when we get the rent, because we do have high taxes on the house.
Yeah, when we get the rent.
But it's not really a wa, it's, it's, it, it, it's not really a wash, because there's the money that we could have in the bank-
Yeah.
That we could use for another, you know, like, if it's just the in, the, the income and outgoing are a wash, but there's a lot more to it than that.
But hopefully, you're making money on the appraisal of the house.
Yes.
I don't have no clue what they paid for it, so.
They paid about $2.35 or $2.40 for it.
How many years has that been with the township?
I think it's only been about five years.
Yeah, we could sell it from now on.
That's a year's road budget. That's what Karen's thinking.
Yeah.
That's mad.
Year two, local roads.
Well, you know, I mean, I don't think we have to make a decision tonight, but I think, you know, there's lots of ideas thrown out, thrown around, so maybe, you know, we might want to consider just, you know, renting it for the next year while we throw the ideas around instead of letting it sit there vacant if it, you know, seems a suitable home to live in.
Can I make a suggestion? Let's, 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 um, agree to let the, the lease expire early.
Yeah.
And-
Get the inspector in there.
Get the inspector in there.
Get the inspector in there.
And then have the inspection results in April, and then we can decide about whether we want to rent it for another year.
Yeah, but I think, you know, if we're really going to do something, it won't happen the next month, so, just to keep it, you know, keep an income flowing in, and not have a vacant house. A vacant house is a liability, if you ask me, you see that one on the corner, is, you know, that, um, across from Bearclaw, that is, just looks terrible, and I don't like having that kind of liability in the township, so.
No, but if we sell it, or tear, if we, if we decide we want to sell it, then we wouldn't want to rent it.
Well, you could-
Well, I mean, until we decide, because I don't think we're going to decide next month if we're going to sell it, I don't, I think there's a lot of, a lot of different feelings here, so, that's just, I'm not saying we make a decision now, but I'm just saying, I would want to do something quickly, so we don't have a vacant house sitting around for, you know, for years.
I think we all agree with that, yeah.
Yeah, so, that's what I'm keeping in mind.
Can I make another suggestion, that why you're having the inspectors go in and just giving a detail of it? What if we call out a demo company and just see what it costs to take it out?
Yeah.
Do you know, anybody know it?
Yeah.
I can find, I'll find one.
All right.
And I'll, don't remember who made it.
Looking for a demo at our house, but, somebody.
Yeah, I think that would be good, good information to have. Okay. All right, so, I don't think we really have to vote on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, just let that, let that go. All right, I will inform, but tomorrow I will inform the, a property manager at Reinhardt that Kat can go ahead and vacate, and will return her security deposit after walkthrough and all of that, but. Okay, and the other discussion is just the international- Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
I just wanted to do clarification on one point. Is there a original lease in this?
Yes, there is.
And, did you say your EBA, the original lease, was terminated early?
Yes. Yes.
I would suggest that, uh, a motion be made to allow that early termination.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's, that's right. Would someone like to make a motion to allow early termination on our current tenant on 6900, is that the address? No, 6900-
I'll make a motion to, uh, allow the lease to, uh, expire early on March 31st for 6900 Dexter Pinckney Road.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
And Karen, there's Lester Brothers, too.
Who's what?
Lester Brothers.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to have a, find out where people are, what people are thinking about the international fire code, is there more information we should be getting, um, what do people need to move forward if we bring a resolution to the board?
Sure, uh, so I, um, did get a chance to, uh, meet Jay Smith down at the fire station, uh, and was very interested in the original interlocal agreement, uh, in my mind, 1985's not that long ago, but, uh, it, it was in the archives, a nice yellowed paper, and-
You saw the original, huh?
And it was the original, um, and-
Typed on a typewriter.
It was, absolutely. The, um, the interlocal, probably, if we were to write a interlocal agreement today, would never put the, the rigid funding equation that's in there, but as a chief, uh, very candidly and accurately represented, that is the, the constraints he's under running a fire department. Just a, a couple of thoughts, uh, within our conversation, I'd like, I'd like us to maybe, for, for purposes of helping, uh, the community understand what we're talking about, we're not really talking about the international fire code, per se, it serves as the basis of us wanting to pass an ordinance to regulate fire protection and fire safety. So, I think that's, when we, when we move forward, let's, let's refer to it that way, so people are clear, um, you know, I, I, it, it is part of our, our, uh, central government function to provide for safety and security of our houses and residence and commercial properties, international fire code is doing that, we're going to have to decide what specific pieces of it we're saying we're adopting, and I think that may be a little bit more of a challenge than conceptually the idea of having it in the first place. So, um, I, I just, you know, a few things that I, I did is, uh, not everybody adopts, uh, the international fire code, the exact same chap, chapters, it's, it's not necessarily always the same, uh, pieces. So, it, it will be incumbent upon us to, to craft an ordinance that- pieces. So it, it will be incumbent upon us to craft an ordinance that captures what it is we're saying we want to adopt. So at this point, I like the idea of having the basis of, you know, a standard for an ordinance, but I can't really say much more until we actually have decided what pieces of it that we're saying we want to do.
Jeff, do you remember Christie Mayer, my next-door neighbor, offered to work, well, she called me to say she was interested in analyzing the international fire, fire code and making recommendations to us about, about how to handle the chief's, you know, what, what to do just, just that. And I think she's got great skills for that. She's on our planning commission, but she also has a professional background that would help her do that, and I think you and she were going to get together and sort of map that out. Is that, is that something we should, should we?
Just to, to cut short, yes, so I, you know, I'm really trying to understand what it was we were trying to get to. Now I feel like we're, we're at a point where that is a, a great step. Anybody that we can sort of incorporate from the community that has practical, practical knowledge in this is probably the best, because code interpretation and code readings are, it's almost like reading, you know, legal opinions. It's very difficult.
Well, I mean, Mark, do you want to weigh in on this?
Just briefly, you know, the whole concept of adapting, adapting each free published code is to take advantage of the technical aspects of that code without having to design your own and go through all the painstaking details of adapting all the criteria, much like the building code, the fire code of that same type of character. So I would caution about modifying it too extensively. There is the opportunity to tailor it to your community. And I, I think I provided some examples of ordinances that adopt this code by reference in other communities where they address specific topics, but the intent is to adapt the code by reference. And again, it's, it's to take advantage of the details and the technical aspects without having to go through the formal findings of fact supporting each one. I would also note that probably more so in the construction, in the building code, but also in any code, the more you stick to the code as you adapt it, typically the more defensible your ordinance is going to be, just because it's competitive, widely enforced.
I, I, you know, I absolutely appreciate it. You know, as, one area that I just want us to be very clear about is we would be extending via this ordinance an enforcement capability to the Dexter area fire department that doesn't exist today. If that is our intent, abiding by the international fire code is the best way to do that, is, is what you're making. I just want to be very clear in our ordinance that we, we have an understanding. The, the fire code can cover ninety, ninety days max using an extension court. You know, are, are those the types of things that we want to have given to an authority to go enforce? Or do we want to say, and, and limit the enforcement pieces to it, to, you know, construction activities and how buildings are built? Where, where do we want to go with this? Not on, on what we say is our standard, but what we're giving to a board to say, go forth and, and enforce as you see fit. I'm not clear on everyone do that.
I think it also makes sense to adopt a code that is consistent with the, with the codes of the other participants in the, in the Dexter area fire department. So if, so if it's Dexter, so Dexter has adopted the international fire code, Webster has not, and Dexter Township has not, which I think means that there is no fire code in operation right now, which I personally don't like. I prefer for there to be a fire code. And I like the idea that we, that all three entities would, would have, would.
Agree with that.
Have the same code, would.
Maybe pass this over to David. We, we do have building, we do follow the Michigan building code. We do have the NFPA. This, this, the IFC is going to talk about maybe a, a longer life cycle of inspections and whatnot. So, I mean, there is a basis for, for fire code, I'll defer to you.
Yeah, we adjust the area construction, it's possible Michigan building code, references to fire code, a lot of that code, there are practices, so, um, so yeah, I mean, there is essentially a fire code, too. It's hard to look at the website, but just like the international fire code is a bit broader, not, not all communities adopt it, and a lot of times rural communities don't typically adopt the fire code, mostly because rural communities typically don't have much commercial, and that's where the national fire code primarily functions, is in commercial. We've also designed, my experience, rural communities have it in places because there's a lot of industrial, there's a lot of commercial, a lot of that has to do with, a lot of that has to do with Asian infrastructure hydrants, not the code, the international fire code, the energy, the suppression system, the lack of the dry, that's the big, that's the big commercial construction, that's the big way for departments to actually push that cost, that safety measure, if we actually follow the code, because there are those, we have to structure it. So Dexter Township beat that out, that's that's the trend.
Think, and that'd be an example where we might say for that section, we're not adopting that piece.
Right.
We're not, we're not altering the code, we're not adopting every chapter of the code.
And Jeff, I mean, because it's been a year since I was a part of that meeting, but that's for future development, right? Not existing structures primarily, right, for the, the code?
And I'll, for, I believe that, that's what we have to decide when we, when we craft this ordinance.
Okay.
We can make that distinction, but the international fire code doesn't, doesn't necessarily say everything is grandfather, this starts new. It just says, these are the codes. It does apply to existing and new, as I understand it. We just need to decide how we want it to be implemented here if we go forward with it.
Okay, for, I guess I, I was recalling differently, but yeah, thank you for clarifying. Mark?
I just wanted to mention, whether you adopt it or not, I mean, that's, that's totally up to you. My comment is more directed at if you are going to adopt this code by reference. Adapting a code by reference is adapting the code. We should try to keep any modifications to it to a minimum. But if, if you don't feel it's necessary to adopt it at all, you don't have to. I would, it is, be careful about making choices.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
It does open you up to liability.
Well, it, it makes it more difficult to enforce as well.
Who does enforce it? Like, if we adopted the fire code, who enforces it?
We would be delegating. If we, in theory, our ordinance would be saying we are delegating that authority to the Dexter area fire board. And then that's giving them the ability to enforce, and the basis, the standards they're enforcing is the IFC. So, I mean, I agree, let's not create some new thing that we're saying we're going to enforce.
So are they collecting fines? How do you, how do we pay for enforcement?
Those are all things I believe we want to account for in how we, we craft this ordinance.
Yeah.
So it could increase our fire budget.
As the chief mentioned in the last meeting, you know, when I, I challenged, what, how do you see this life cycle paying that play out? He, he did indicate, well, you know, notices, fines, and evictions. And I said, well, I mean, that's something we've got to be very clear about, that when we say we are going to adopt this, and that's why I want it to be, I want it to be re-characterized as an ordinance for fire protection, and not seem, seeming like we're just adopting the under, uh, writer's laboratory UL listing or stuff. Yes, it's, it's a standard, but what's requested by our fire chief is authority to do enforcement inspections, potentially fines, mechanisms where he, and, and his department isn't continuously responding to the same issue over and over again. And, and there are areas, residential areas, that, that, you know, certain air, aspects of it probably are helpful. Loner lakes, where people live very close together, you have a, you know, an interest in that fire pit that's really close to your house. I mean, there's, there's, there's absolutely things in there. I think to Karen, to your point, let's enlist help from folks and, and look at it. The chief himself, you know, suggested that we don't adopt every chapter. And looking at what the city of Ann Arbor adopted, looking at what some others, you know, some include chapters, some don't. And, you know, that's, that's what we will be tasked with, is, is saying we adopt, you know, chapters, you know, one through six to be the basis of our code, and enforcement will be delegated. And I think we have a chance to maybe shape that so we're all comfortable with it.
I mean, there's some big pieces there, like roads, you know, and like how the fire trucks can get in. You know, I mean, those are big.
There's so many variations.
That should be a thing already, and it's not. And that's why we need to do this. I mean, it is very important. Or clearing trees, you know, limbs.
If you do some of that on the lake properties, to widen the road on the lake properties would wipe out people's.
Yards.
Yards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are you saying that that's a good idea, or, I, I'm, I'm a little confused about the conversation.
Well.
When we get, when we get to the point of drafting an ordinance, then that's where we, we, we will say, this, every piece of this is good, but shall not apply to existing roads if we say we don't want to affect people's lands, or will apply to, you know, only new road. Do we have a chance to craft that?
I was thinking more in terms of.
New development.
At this point, new development, yeah, more or less. When I was speaking about it, it was more new development, not existing structures, because I mean, let's be honest in the.
Well, a lot of it, and too, I mean, there's probably, I can't imagine a scenario where there's a road standard that would ever let the roads that have been built to this point be built.
Well, they do.
They are.
They are.
That's something we can address in our, in our zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
It's not, just because, remember, we're, we're delegating to the fire department.
But then we have to go back and then fixing, you know, at that point.
But we're, I can please correct if I'm wrong. We're not doing that by adopting the fire code. We're, we're handing that over to the fire chief to have the prerogative, and then another fire, fire chief may say, I don't care about that basis of it, not actively be involved in it.
It sounds like.
To me, it's, it's hard, because I agree with it in principle.
Yeah.
I think we should have, you know, a, a well-formed basis for fire safety. Look, I mean, bluntly, we have a different hazard being in the rural areas in which there are hydrants and suppression and ways. We have to take a very preemptive, protective stance to try to eliminate those. I did talk to one of our insurance providers here, and she had a very good point to offer, which is, most of the time, fires are human behavior caused, and it's not, it's not inherent structural flaws, but it's the, you know, contractor's not doing hot work carefully. You know, so there are things that, that the, the fire code will help, you know, with, with how permitting works for construction. I mean, there are things in there that can help. I just, when looking at it, this will, in some way, sounds easy. We're adopting this book, here you go. But then it's going to be the single largest regulatory action we will take as a report, if you look at it a different way. So, long way to say that I, when I was looking at it, I said, well, this is all about how we do it. Not, not, you know, yes, no, but I think we should consider moving to forming it into an ordinance, and then we have something to react to.
I, I agree with everything that you said. I think it's smart. I would just add that the board that we would be handing this authority to is partly us. You know, I mean, so we have our representatives on that board, and we can take, we can be active in requesting our board members. Diane is one, and I forget who the other person is, but we, we, we can, we can certainly request our board members to advocate for financial prudence, to, and, and to advocate for prudent execution of whatever ordinance is we. It's not like we're totally handing, we, we still have just some influence over the, over that board and its decisions.
Well, so.
I thought the chief was a little, when he said, you, he kept saying over and over, you don't have any control over this budget. There was truth in that, in the sense that the bud, that the budget was already approved by their board, but he was minimizing the fact that we have representation on the board.
Right.
You know, the board consists partially of us, so this was a decision of our representatives and others.
True. Okay, so what would the next steps be? For, I mean, do we, we could just table this for a while, or does somebody want to take it on as, I don't know, Jeff, do you want to?
Well, yeah, I mean, let's, 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 let's move this forward.
Okay.
Now that I kind of have more of a explicit understanding of what the task is at hand, I mean, to be honest, I didn't understand that this was a request for an ordinance.
Okay.
And so now that I understand that, I will connect with Karen's representative, and then let's, let's.
Yeah, and keep Mark in the loop.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's spend the time talking there, and then, you know, the next step will be to come back and either recommend, to recommend moving to an ordinance or, or not.
Okay.
That's basically it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next agenda item is authorization of payments.
Oh, that's me.
Um, there is just one correction. I talked to Clerk Stan Boilies prior to the meeting, and in the packet, it will show that there was a double payment for, for, police?
Police.
Police, yes, police. Um, so it's actually.
They already cost a lot.
Yeah, I know. In actuality, it is only, it's half that amount, so it's forty, forty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-one cents. So that's just one correction.
Where are we?
Authorization of payments.
But we're not, where are we in the, in the packet?
Oh, in the back, Michelle's report.
Okay.
Should be all this stuff right here.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, so we have a total of sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and forty-five cents from the general fund, one hundred and five thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars, one hundred, I'm sorry, I'm tired. A hundred and five thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and nineteen cents for the fire fund. Police fund is forty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-one cents, and that's that correction. Open Space and Land Initiative Fund, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and seven cents. We have General Agency Fund, nine hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents. And payroll for this month is thirty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents, bringing us to a grand total of two hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-seven cents. That's including gross payroll.
I was good. So, thank you for the budget variance report, Michelle.
Sure.
Um, and Mira's, I was wondering if you knew why the state's shared revenue is so much higher than the original budget?
Um, on the budget variance?
Mm-hmm. So if we brought in seven hundred and twenty-five thousand to date, and we budgeted for?
I had no part in the budget of the, of the state's shared revenue. I didn't make, I didn't bring those numbers forward, if that's what you're asking.
I'm just wondering why it was.
Would that have anything, that wouldn't have anything to do with, uh?
I don't think.
ARPA, right?
So that would be a question that I'd be interested in.
Wait, is it right? Okay, so you're looking at this, and then this is for this year?
And this is what, this is the year-to-date balance?
That may be, Karen. It might be added in there for some reason, and I don't.
ARPA.
I mean, it would have to be, I mean, because that's quite a jump. I would say that that would have to be ARPA. I would ask Colleen where she's putting that.
Can I ask a question on, on the check dispersment thing? It says, it says MIRs, which is the retirement program, right, for past employees or, or, what, what's the retirement? And I thought the MIRs was already one hundred percent funded, is it not, for the past administration?
It was at one point a hundred and two percent funded.
What page are you looking at, Karen?
I am looking at page five of nine on the check dispersment. I'm, I'm just wondering why we're still making MIRs payments on.
Because I think we have people that are currently still in MIRs.
Yeah, MIRs, yeah.
MIRs.
MIRs.
Who's, it, I mean, it is a possibility, from when I talked with, when we talked with MIRs in the beginning, to, you can't, it was a hundred and two percent funded, and this was a year ago. Um, you can't get the money back, but you can reduce your payment. But they'll continue to bill as long as we don't take the steps to do that.
Okay, hadn't the, okay, so the old administration had retirement programs, and I thought just before we came into office, a two-hundred thousand dollar payment was made.
Correct.
In advance for their, have we utilized that two-hundred thousand? Or are we deducting the future payments from that two-hundred thousand?
We have not been deducting the future payments from the hundred and two percent, you know, from the overpayment.
So it's overpaid, the, the, it was overpaid, the last administration overpaid the retirement fund. If we started deducting from it, would we have to start making payments in a couple years? What, what's that?
I don't know.
I guess I just don't understand it.
It's really complicated, yeah, so.
Okay, so we need to dive into it?
Yeah, that would really.
Okay, so we need to dive into it. I'd be more than glad to dive into it, because it just, quite frankly, it kind of irks me a little bit.
Yeah.
And I'd be glad, I'll put that on my list.
Okay, yeah, it's a big, it's a big.
Thank you, and we do still have one employer of our.
Kim, yeah.
Yeah.
So I do have one quick budget question in regard to the fire station. I really feel bad that I don't know this, but, so we have a substation here in Dexter Township, there's one in Webster Township, and there's the Fire Hall in the city of Dexter. Is that our property, ours, or is it, does it belong to the Dexter area Fire?
Substation?
Yeah.
The substation, the number two is, belongs to Dexter Township, so if we got out of the interlocal agreement, they would take all the equipment, and we'd have the building in the property.
So, weird way to bring this up, and I'd just like to share that in meeting with Chief Smith, I got a tour of the station. Never actually seen inside, which is strange, because I like fire trucks.
The city?
Cities, yes. And so in looking at, we do spend financially support and have maintained that fire station, it looks quite nice. It doesn't seem that perhaps everybody in the interlocal agreement is putting the same money towards their fire stations. And so I would just encourage everybody here to find time and visit the other stations, and take note of how the fire department, how they are able to support the firefighters in the different locations.
Well, didn't Dexter Township build a new station, what, five years ago, six years, seven years ago? Webster is building, or has just finished their.
It's open.
And Dexter, city of Dexter, is still in debates of where to put it.
Well, so to put it more strongly.
Yeah, you can say what you're thinking.
Yeah, it's, when I, you know, read that the station is functionally obsolete, that, I mean, that sounds.
Our station?
The city's.
The city.
Oh, Dexter City.
Dexter City, that sounds okay, so, you know, it's, trucks have gotten bigger, or something like that. It was actually astounding to me that the place where the firefighters sleep does not have heat.
Yeah.
It is not a heated room. And the space that they have to conduct their training is when they move their couch away from the conference room. They have to rearrange, they have no space.
Yeah.
And it struck me, and I'm not asking the board to do this, I just, until we all have had a chance to, if we haven't, just sort of take a look at it. Under the funding model, if there's a shared responsibility, it feels like that shared responsibility is more than just reimbursement, but also that every person in the interlocal is supporting it equally, and that, to me, extends to the facilities.
I don't think there's shared responsibility on the facilities.
Correct.
Each entity covers their own facilities.
And that may be, but it would seem that if we saw the equipment driving around with big, you know, rust holes in it,
You're saying we should lobby.
trailing oil, and, I mean, you would say, well, this is horrible, but because it's behind, you know, a closed door and closed windows, we don't see it. And so I just want to maybe publicly state that it'd be good to visit the substations and just have an understanding of where our folks that we are, we are expecting to be there for us, how they are supported.
Thanks, Josh. Thank you. We do have a second call for public comment?
Oh, did we approve? I don't think we approved.
We didn't approve the payments.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, we didn't, sorry. It's getting late. We woke you up, though. Okay.
Just a minute.
Does someone want, oh, do you have another question?
No, I need a motion, yeah, I need a second for it.
I'll make, I'll second the motion. I'll second Maris's motion.
Okay. Do you have a roll call vote for approval of payment?
Sure, Karen Nolte.
Yes.
Jeff McDoll, Michelle Stanboilies, Diane Radkovich, Maris Max, Laura Sanders, myself, Karen Sickenya, yes.
Okay. Authorization of payments approved. Second call for public comment.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you.
We've been waiting a long time.
This is how we keep public in our.
Thanks for last being slow.
There's a long, long way to go, but. My name's Nick Benzinger, I'm sixty-nine seventy, Dexter County, so not this one, but the next one over. And I have the opportunity to talk to you guys, since you guys have said you're adorable, and we'll definitely talk tomorrow. Congratulations, I'm happy to ask you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of comments on sixty-nine hundred, and then a question.
Excuse me, Nick, is the green light on on that microphone?
No, I think it's not on.
On the side of the mic, on the mic.
Pull the mic out.
Testing.
There you go. Now you're being recorded.
Now I'm being recorded.
Now you can, you're free to walk, too.
The whole stage.
You can sing a song.
Excellent. So, yeah, just a couple of comments and a question on sixty-nine hundred. So, some of my fondest childhood memories actually took place in that house. My Aunt Jenny and Uncle, great Aunt Jenny and Uncle Emmett lived there for, you know, my whole life. So just to hear kind of, it talked about that it's just going to be demolished for a lot, is kind of.
It hurts.
Yeah, it hurts. It hurts just a little bit. So, the thing that stands out to me, kind of, is that the tax dollars themselves, in my humble opinion, seem like they would be better used if they weren't in an illiquid asset like that, and turn it back into something that actually does generate tax dollars, instead of, you know, for roads, stuff like that, instead of just an empty lot, it's just kind of sitting there. Makes sense to me, I don't know. And then, I just wanted to ask a question. The, initially, when my Aunt Jenny died, they, she offered me, her daughter Cheryl offered me the sort of, the opportunity to buy the house, and I wasn't able to match the offer that the township had. So that leads me to my question, why did the township buy it in the first place?
Well, that's a good question.
We don't know.
We.
Thank you.
Did say.
Yeah.
That, that.
Expansion.
That it was, in case in fifty years there was a need to expand, he said that in public comment, to expand the township hall and increase the parking capacity of the township.
We don't, we don't physically own this land that this building sits on. It's, yeah, and so that would be the only adjoining land that we could possibly own to expand. That's what we were told, but we don't know, really.
Well, I had the pleasure of talking with the treasurer of medicine in the parking lot, and we were discussing that it would be good to bring more younger people into the township, and, you know, that had some interest in what was going on, and taking one more house out of the house, and not doing that, so that was all I had to say. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Nick. Do what? Would you like to come up and have public comment?
Come on on.
Come up and introduce yourself, and.
I think I spoke with you on the phone.
For the last, how many, thirty years now, I've had Nick's mom, right? Well, I, well, don't we have some more to say, or do we?
You could, go ahead.
I just wanted to get on to what he had to say, and that was that we're providing neighbors, and so it would be helpful if we could come some sort of, you know, let us know so that we're still part of the picture, because there was another issue, too, in the back, is that when they sold the property, they didn't have an agreement.
Yeah, just hold it up, because you're being recorded.
When they sold the property, they did have an agreement, and Harley thought, without asking me, he and I didn't always get along, but.
Said that they were going to take it all over, including the field up, and they were going to take all of my, rest of my land, I owned all of it. But he decided that this is where the township needed to be in its modern iteration. So, so the deal, or it's not a deal, but the transaction took place without having been considered in all of its market possibilities. And Nick knows as much about it as I do, no, it's just that I wanted to say hi, I am one of the guys. But that's who I am, I'm the crazy lady who lives on the world.
Did you, did you say your name?
Jennifer Benzinger. Yeah, this is Nicholas Benzinger.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Thanks for sharing this story, too.
Do you guys have interest in buying the property?
Yes.
Oh, you do have interest, you have interest in buying that from Dexter Township?
My first child is arriving on April fifteenth, supposedly.
Congratulations.
Looking for a place to start my family.
Oh.
So, yes, a personal appeal of sorts, and that's.
Gotcha.
Well, I, since I'm the one that wanted to destroy.
Well, I mean, maybe, maybe, will we be getting the house appraised as well as inspected? I mean, maybe we should get an appraisal, so we would know.
I agree.
Well, I, no, and in all seriousness, as the person who brought that up, you know, that you came and you spoke, I mean, this is our community collectively. We want the best things for it. I offered that as an option, trying to understand what's the best thing for it. You know, and as somebody whose parents still live in the same house I grew up in, and that does matter.
It does matter.
It's all over in Pittsfield Township, so.
Sorry, Mark, Mark's weaning us down.
Okay.
I just want to say that was important for me to hear, and I respect what you said, and will absolutely.
I don't think we should break down into a bunch of conversations, guys, and make promises that.
Can I have, can I have one comment, though, I did, I'm just thinking, you know, a little bit, and then this might be a little bit ahead of it, but, I mean, there are deeds, right, and there's some kind of deed restrictions and whatnot, you can put into an agreement when you do sell that we get first bid, Dexter Township would, if they were to sell the property, if that were the case. But there's a lot of options here that we can look at besides, you know, I mean, there was a bunch of options given tonight, yes, Mark.
Mark, Mark is going.
We do plan to discuss this at the next meeting, so.
Exactly.
I just wanted to interject, I know there's a deal here, there are requirements for the township proposing property sale.
Sure.
Yeah, of course. Oh, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or concerns from board members and staff?
I hate to say I have one, if I could just, I have, actually, I have two. The first one, all this talk about roads, and David, this probably goes to you, and I don't know if the board needs to address it, or what do we do, our private road situation in the township, where residents can pretty much do what they want to do without fifty-one percent cooperation amongst the neighborhoods, is that just stand like that? Do we have any ability to oversee our private roads in the township? So, I know of one neighborhood where it's a private road, one person, two people out of maybe six, decided that they wanted to widen the road and chip it, and they went ahead and did it without any neighborhood consultation or agreement to have this done. It changed the waterways, it changed, it's now put, chipped down that the water's going to run into the lakes, but there's no means for them to stop it, according to our township. Is, do we have a way to do that, to change that in the future?
Is there a private road agreement in that village?
No.
So, that's the biggest issue facing all communities in Dexter Township, is that their road, in case they're, there was a private road agreement, and these private access, these were planted with those parcels, some tax-aided, paying years ago.
Correct.
As long as they take the legal road way, there's no mechanism, there's no private road, there's no way that's created, there's no anything.
Right.
So, really, this is what the township can do, if they infringe upon some property, I can trust that, but if they're just simply in the road, we have people that we've already, they're part of the part of the house, there's no private road agreement, we don't have a mechanism.
So there's really nothing we can do about, even if it changes.
You could recommend that they establish a private road agreement.
Okay, haha, okay. I happen to be a resident, this didn't happen on my road, but it happened on a road near me, and I fear for my road, and I can't even get a neighborhood association to do maintenance on the road, that's why I grade the road and everything. Getting, so getting those private road agreements is, you know, it's virtually impossible to get a percentage to agree to it. But I just find it amazing that somebody can come in and change the whole course of the road, and change the runoff, so it could run off into people's properties, and they have nothing they can do about it.
That happens over by my friend, also, over on Portage Lake.
Yeah, now we're.
Same thing, it's crazy.
So, basically, they've altered the property.
They did.
So, that's a different, and that can be complicated, if it's not inspected, the water running, that can be a real issue.
Yeah, okay.
So, there aren't going to be.
They took out ditches, that the ditches ran into the lake, and just blacked, chipped sealed everything.
So, they altered the drainage course.
Yes.
So, those kinds of things should be addressed now, it could become a state issue, because in higher court, it's a statute.
That's what I want, okay.
So, that's, that's a different.
That becomes a different issue.
That can become, there's some enforcement, there's some environmental.
But that's not, Dexter Township can't do the enforcement, they have to hire an attorney and go for it?
That is, it sounds like a tough task.
Yeah.
I mean, if people are seeing, or that, or if it's a press, that's a higher, that's something you know.
I just, it's just amazing, we have so many private roads, and we really are just, people are just free to kind of do what they want to.
Well, they are private roads.
I know, as I drive my little quad and great mind.
That's why roads are usually not private.
Yeah. And then my second thing is, I was just wondering if we could take three minutes, and if everybody could just kind of list what projects they're working on, because, you know, I'm typing info at Dexter Township Updates and that kind of stuff, and I think I'm losing track of what's happening. Do you know what I mean, just to give, so we know Karen's roads?
Yeah, and also, I'm working on the Northwest Passage.
Oh, yeah.
We had an update meeting today, we basically picked, I think, the best option for crossing North Territorial, and we're going to have a final budget on it soon, and a fundraising plan.
Okay, and your master plan, for the trustees, though.
Well, right, the master plan, the master planning committee is underway.
Okay.
I mean, you, I sent you the master, the, yeah.
But who should I, point for master, master plan, would it be you, David?
You're also on the planning commission.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, Laura?
Open Space, Open Space and Land Preservation.
Okay. Maris?
I don't really have a project per se, but I am working on our new investment portfolio, and that's.
I think that's big.
It is big, but I would like to say, too, that, you know, tax season is wearing down here, so I know it, follow you guys with your projects. Let me know.
You're going to be rampant.
Email me, call me if, you know, you need, like, researched on, or, you know, you need somebody to help.
Are you on the waveboard still?
I am on the waveboard, yeah.
When you're writing about local roads, don't forget, and the master plan, don't forget single hauler.
Oh, yeah.
Because.
We haven't assigned anybody that, really, because it's going under the, it's going in the, oh, you're handling?
Because it's part of local roads.
Single hauler issue.
But we want to get the word out about single hauler as much as we can.
I'm writing my thing, and I thought, I need to, so every month, I want to kind of rotate or give updates on some of these topics, so people get it.
Yeah.
Okay, Diane, you're fire board, right?
David, one, one.
Meeting for the new fire.
What Karen, be sure Karen knows, when the survey goes out to residents.
Yeah, because I'll.
The interview for the new fire chief is on Monday at Western Township, it's the twenty-first.
Okay.
That's an open meeting. Okay, Michelle?
All right, I'm Open Space.
Mm-hmm.
I'm on the master planning committee. I also serve on the WWRA, so I have been speaking with them in our past two meetings in regards to single hauler for recycling, because they just had their grant, they have a beautiful new truck, and they. Dexter Township, so, while I'm going to, I'd be happy to talk to you or give you this information, so I thought that was pretty exciting.
Yeah, that's very exciting.
And then they would take the recycles to our own local recycling facility, which is great, they make the profit, send it off, and the items are actually recycled. Other than that, I'm still with home and film plastic.
Well, you're doing, I think, the election, you should mention.
Oh, yeah, elections.
Training and the, and the.
Elections upcoming.
You know, the fact that you're shadowing another election, and that we're going to have a primary, and everyone should know that.
Okay.
So, I'm meeting with Aden Tresh in Washtenaw County, and we are doing a total course on the QBF, which will be.
Is that the elections?
That is our qualified voter file.
Our what? What did you say?
Our qualified voter file, so with our EPL books and voter registration cards, MasterCards, people that move in and out of the community.
Oh, goodness, we are shadowing Superior Township from start to completion for a special election.
Who?
What township? Oh, I'm sorry, Superior.
Superior.
And Karen, you should add the upgrades, the technology upgrades.
Yeah, I've already been writing about that. And I'm not going to do this all at once, I just, I need pieces to shoot out. Okay, Jeff?
The IFC.
The IFC.
Okay, and then, I'm, I have broadband, multi lakes, my joy, I, I am in touch with the Red Cross to talk about doing a blood drive here, if anybody's interested, possibly.
That's a good idea.
We have two cleanup days coming up, and there's something else, I can't remember right now, it's late and I forget, but I'll write about them.
I'm Agri Center.
Yeah, that's a commercial business, we can't do that.
It's on our strategic plan, girl, okay.
Thank you.
There's got to be a way, where there's a will, there's a way.
So I'll be reaching out for information on topics to get out, and the other thing, oh, I know the other one, the website, what's, okay, I'll put that under me, website, and.
Him and I are working on that, too.
Yeah, but we got to finish that up, and there was something else.
Facebook?
Yeah, I've already, I wrote that down.
Okay, to this.
We, yeah, we have to come out with a better way to enlist, we have about two hundred and fifty people in the, in the loop list, somehow we got to get another thousand, I'm not sure how to get the word out to them, to join.
Would you guys like to be on our email?
Are you on the in the loop?
List, we send out a newsletter.